No order, you can all please stand to say the word.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
We have recommended board approve the financial non-personnel consent agenda items one through four as presented.
Do we have a motion?
No motion.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I would recommend that the board approve the personnel consent agenda items one through, is it still sixteen? Yes, one through sixteen as presented.
Do we have a motion? This is the board's ask.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, this part of the contract or board agenda that you just approved tonight includes hiring of some new staff. So I haven't met them all, I'm gonna do a quick roll call, if you're here tonight, please just raise your hand, we'd like to put a face with the name. Let's see, I know these individuals. Rachel Blazek? Welcome. Gina Humbert? I think was gonna be here. Melody Missel? Welcome. Lucas Federighi? Welcome. Dariana Oriak? Michelle Metrino? I think wasn't gonna be here either. Emily Sugg?
And something new we're starting is, we are actually gonna go around the room because we haven't had a chance to meet any of our new teachers, so first of all, welcome to Maryvale, look forward to seeing you and working with you in the district. My name is James McDermott, I'm the current sitting president, I've been on the school board for five years, going into my sixth year.
I'm Ron Borlock, I've been on the board for a little over seven years now.
I'm Chris Doo, I've been on the board for a little over a year now.
Marie Zimmer, this is my first year and I'm also a retired teacher, so love teachers, love nurses, welcome.
Out of Maryvale.
Mike? New business?
All right, I'd like to recommend board group policy update as presented in the agenda.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'd like to recommend that we close the thirty day public comment period with the district safety plan.
No motion.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'd like to recommend that the board approve the district safety plan as presented.
Do we have a motion?
No motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Updates, any update Erie County Association or New York State School Boards? Is anyone planning on going to the convention in October? You're gonna go? Okay. I know Jen mentioned she was gonna try and figure out if she could attend some as well as I am too, so.
When were the dates?
Twenty seven, twenty eight?
Uh, fifteen. I got it, it was not fifteen. Twenty seven, twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight?
I can't remember when was the date.
Okay. Let's put our heads together so we can have, should we not get our registrations in? We do have a couple items that we're adding on this evening to our miscellaneous section, and I think the first one before we go into the other one is board retreat. I'd like to get a board retreat set up for us, so if we could get our calendars together, if somebody can, I can use the old Excel spreadsheet, we have the check dates, so that'll be coming, just see you all. We do have our student liaisons coming in next month, I hope, we have seven candidates, so if you could, if we have questions that we can get to in the next couple weeks, so that they're prepared for that.
Are we gonna take the three? You have an idea about?
We have, we have seven interviewees or seven candidates. That's something we need to talk about, we've gone from one to seven to three to four, so it's kinda up to us how many we have. I'm fine with any of it, I think the fewer the better, just because it's more intimate with them getting experience working with us on the actual board. But hopefully, whatever everybody wants to do. And Ms. Hada will probably continue to liaison through the high school. The next topic, which is obviously well-known throughout Erie County right now, is the asylum seekers that are gonna be attending the Maryvale School District that's coming here. As of right now, we have sixty-six students.
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine students. Changing again?
Three, okay. That will change.
That's okay. I guess, to start, to, to, board members, what questions do you have that, I know very, I know some, Mr. Nando knows most of the information. Questions? Questions that you're hearing from other people throughout the district, whatever the case?
So how did they end up here at Maryvale? How did we get chosen?
Well, Maryvale itself wasn't chosen. Chitwaga was chosen, I don't know how. I received something in the beginning of August, just saying that asylum seekers are coming to Chitwaga, but there's not any school age children. And then they got, the bus got here and then they told me, well, there are twenty-two school age children. Then they sent me a list, and there were sixty-six school age children. And to this day, this is the only thing in writing that I've ever received this whole month about the children coming. How they ended up in Chitwaga, I think that's more of a political question around folks in the county, maybe the town can answer, but I don't know how they ended up in Chitwaga, other than I was just informed that they were gonna be here.
Were you given like an opt-out of like not having the kids come here, or was it just?
Nope. It wasn't, they really didn't involve school personnel, school superintendents, it was more, it was a political, political thing. There's a resettlement agency called Daco from New York City, and they are the ones that are relocating the asylum seekers for New York City. So I don't know, again, I don't know how they chose Western York, Chitwaga, that's more of a broad political question, maybe for somebody in the county. But no, if children are, reside within the confines of our district, whether permanently or whether it's as, you know, on a homeless basis, which these asylum-seeking children can be considered homeless, we are required by law to educate them. So there's no, you know, we didn't ask, we didn't, you know, we can't opt out, if they're here, we're obligated by law to educate them.
Now, are they gonna follow the same immunization policies of all the other kids that come to Maryvale?
Yes. And more, because I'm requiring that they are screened for infectious diseases. They've already been screened for TB, because there was a TB issue at the hotel, and there's gonna be a list of further infectious diseases that we give them that we're requiring before they set foot in our buildings. And I don't know which ones, myself, I'm not a medical person, but I'm consulting with our medical director in our district to come up with what we want them screened for. So I'm requiring immunizations that New York State requires, and I'm requiring, beyond New York State, I'm requiring screening for infectious diseases.
Do we have a breakdown of the ages, and maybe to add on to that a little bit, because the age difference from K through twelve or pre-K now through twelve is huge, especially when it comes to discipline?
Yes.
So are they gonna, I mean, I'm assuming they're a student, they're gonna be held to the same standards, the same discipline?
Same code of conduct, they're a student in Maryvale, they're, they follow the inner code of conduct, and every, every school rule, every, everything is, you know, they have to follow all of that, yeah. And, I'll show you, you mentioned broken down by age. This is, I kinda created this from the document, it's the same document that they gave me, but I broke them up by, by building. All that they gave me was the age, ages of the kids, which is the first column, the number of students at that age, second column, the primary languages of those students at the age levels, and the number of students speaking the language. That's, that's it, that's all Maryvale knows right now. So you can see, you know, there are three, four-year-olds, there are nine five-year-olds, seven six-year-olds, seven seven-year-olds. Primary has the largest population, twenty-six. Intermediate, you can see, there's third grade, there's fourth grade, there's fifth grade, and they have a total of seventeen. Middle, you're sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, and they have fourteen. In high school, they have fourteen as well, and we're not anticipating any, or maybe, maybe we'll get few educational records, but we're not anticipating any educational records coming with these kids. So in high school, that presents a challenge, if they're seventeen years old, we have to assume they don't have any credits, they have to go in, you know, basically freshman classes at that age level. So unless we get records, that's what we have to do.
So you're thinking that they don't have a lot of schooling from where they come from?
Again, this is what, this is the only information they gave us.
So with that being said, you know, when they do come here, they're gonna have to take the styrology test and stuff like that, so they're immediately quickly, so they're gonna have to go, is that gonna be bumping kids out that already been in the district, out of those special services?
No. Well, first, we have thirty days to ID them, called an ICNTAL, it's an ENL test, it's a way to screen them within thirty days, and that'll help determine their ENL services. But they're not gonna bump any of our kids out of, out of just the ENL service, and I say, they are, they are gonna be our kids. And just for clarity's sake, these kids were put in the middle, they, they didn't ask for this, and when they walk through our doors, I'm gonna welcome them, I think our community's gonna welcome them, but at the same time, I have to protect the health and safety of our, you know, current Maryvale students and our, and our staff. That includes ensuring that nobody loses services that they're required services.
Do we, do we?
Go ahead. I know, all around the United States, we're short on ENL teachers, and I know that we have had an issue here with influx of students, so I'm thinking of the general education teacher with the students in their classroom, I know you're probably gonna spread them out, but we don't know, I mean, obviously, we don't know, we don't know, you know, how much they know how to, you know, still and things like that, how is that teacher going to handle that entire classroom, alone?
Well, we're gonna rely on the teachers to tell us what they need, like, we're not gonna presume, you know, if they tell us they need support, we're gonna have to try to look for that support. It may be difficult, maybe, you know, to try to secure like teacher aides or, you know, whatever, if the class sizes get high, do we hire another teacher to lower them? Those are things that, you know, a lot of the situations that we don't know, we don't know at this point, so we're gonna rely listening to our teachers to tell us what they think that they need, you know, and if I could, kinda thinking back on that, the class, how this is gonna impact each of our buildings? So, primary school, there's the grade, grade bands at the primary school, right, pre-K to two. These are the number of asylum-seeking children that are going into the whole grade level, and this is the impact on class size. So, pre-K will stay eighteen to one, we have slots in pre-K. Kindergarten, there's gonna be six rooms at twenty-three per, one room at twenty-two. First grade, we're gonna have five rooms at twenty-three, two rooms at twenty-four, and five rooms at twenty-three, two rooms at twenty-two, and second grade. Now, Mrs. Curl created three ENL sections in each, in each of the grade levels, so the ENL students are spread out among those three ENL classrooms that were already designated to have ENL support. So, if, you know, the nine kids, there's three, three more ENL students per three ENL classrooms in kindergarten.
Are we gonna have like weekly communications between the teachers and the principals and you, just see how things is going? So we can move at a five, is anybody here who needs to change something?
I'm sure, I'm sure, like I said, we, we need to rely on listening to the teachers and what their needs are.
Is there a thought that we might, I think something that we've all seen in the media is that customs, traditions, what's right, what's not right, has already caused some issues with this group of people in Chitwaga at least. So, do we plan on having like a welcome day for these students so that we can actually sit down and talk and say, you know, this is the United States, this is how we work here, this is how our schools work, you know, it's not okay to do these types of things?
I think that, that's an idea.
To acclimate them?
And to be completely honest, we haven't gotten that far yet with the planning process because we're still trying to digest the limited information that we're given, and the fact that it's, it's changing all the time too. I think we would consult with our ENL staff, and we did hope we do, you know, culture days at high school, and I think that'd be a good idea, but I just wanna consult with the ENL staff before we get here, yeah. I mean, there's, to some degree, there's always, you know, a, a level of adjustment for any ENL student that comes in the district and these children.
Is this creating any additional busing requirements?
Yes, yes. So, we're gonna need an additional bus, doing two runs in the morning, two runs in the afternoon, every day, and that'll be additional, that's, that's not, that's a cost that wasn't budgeted for.
Will it be strictly like from school to the hotels?
That's what we're thinking, yeah, it's on designated run, I think that's what we're thinking.
I know there was a lot of talk, and people were concerned that the hotel they were staying in is not in the district. They were saying outside the district.
The Wollongong and Buffalo Airport is in the district.
Okay, a lot do was saying that, they were saying that the vengeance one, that's outside.
Vengeance is outside, that was longer.
Yeah, that was longer, a lot of people were saying that the ones that are coming here are staying at that hotel, a lot of people were, you were taking on that hotel, like jetpack.
No, no, the vengeance, if they're relocating that hotel, it's not gonna be in Maryvale.
Do we think we might have to hire anybody not budgeted at this point?
Yes, yes, and I, if, I can, I can go down to the other schools and just kinda go through that. So intermediate school, now here's where we're, we're kinda tight, okay? Third grade, we have three asylum-seeking children, it's, you know, our class sizes across the grade level will be twenty-three. Fourth and fifth grade is where we, where we start to get where I get a little uncomfortable, because we have six asylum-seeking children in fourth grade, four rooms are twenty-five, two rooms are twenty-six, just because we got some new registrants this week. And, you know, and obviously, we always get an influx of registrations, so it's hard to predict that we'll get any more between now and the start of school. Fifth grade, we have eight asylum-seeking children, five rooms are twenty-four, two rooms are twenty-five. So there may be a need, depending on how this goes, to, to hire a teacher to lower these class sizes. That is something we, we don't know at this point, and that would definitely be an unbudgeted expense.
Do we have room to hire another teacher? Classroom?
Physical room?
Physical room?
We make that. Middle school, I think we're, middle school was slated to get a point four ENL position anyway, so the ENL position was gonna come from the high school to teach point four in the middle. And if a teacher, you know, we're gonna ask a teacher to consider teaching a sixth, sixth assignment, if that happens, we're gonna be able to accommodate, you know, all the needs and the services that, that are, that are required in middle school with these class sizes. So sixth grade, we have twenty-three, seventh grade, twenty-three, eighth grade, twenty-four, generally, you know, because there's different sections have, it's not, it's not as clean as elementary, you're gonna talk class size at the secondary level, but that's generally what they're gonna be. High school is where it, it gets a little different, because again, like I said before, classes are based on credits in that, rather than ages. Because, again, we anticipate having littles and no educational records, we're gonna need to place students in ninth grade classes, like, like you see here. If students come with records, we would adjust as, as necessary and as needed. And the class sizes in those ninth grade classes would be, you know, advanced physical science, twenty-four, in ELA section, we can have fourteen, math, fourteen, global, fourteen. Why, why are those three so low? Because we had AIS teachers right now at the high school, that we're able to give them a section of this. That's gonna, you know, that's a trade-off, because now you have less AIS. But that's why you see fourteen, fourteen, fourteen here, and twenty-four in science. We will need to hire an additional point six ENL teacher to meet the ENL needs of the incoming students. So that's, that's, at this point, that's the only hire that we anticipate, unless we get more registrations. Now, the problem is, so Erie One BOCs is hiring, is posting for four itinerant ENL teachers. What we could do is, if they get somebody, we could, we could service, you know, buy into that service, you get the point six ENL teacher, and then, you know, you get the state aid back, tell them you're on it, they can't find anybody, they can't find, there's a district that, that is on the radars, you know, of, of the vengeance folks moving to, they're gonna be posting for ENL teachers, because they're not necessarily ready. I mean, we were told beginning of August, there's a district that's getting told right now that they're getting about fifty kids moving into, not in Chitwaga. So, that, right now, that's, that's what we're thinking staffing-wise, but again, if, you know, we hear from our teachers, like, you know, I, I need, I have a, I need students, I need an age, well, we gotta, we gotta try to, to meet those needs, and those are unanticipated costs, all, the transportation included. But also, kind of, things that we don't know, that we don't know. Are these, do these kids need school supplies, clothes, food? What do they, you know, our family support center is, is starting this year, and, but we weren't anticipating dealing with seventy families, more than what we, you know, traditionally would be working. So our social workers across the district, including in the family support center, will be connecting folks to social services through Erie County, we, we talked to Erie County about that, but we don't know what their needs are, is the problem, until they get here. So, it's frustrating, I, I said this one of the news outlets, this reminds me of the COVID years, that you don't know a lot of information, and what you do know always changes. And that's, there's been constant change, but the one constant is, I haven't received anything else, other thing in writing other than this, which is frustrating. But, you know, the, the town and the Chitwaga police, very, very responsive to my calls, the state assembly, I'm, I'm in the senate, I'm talking to the representatives there because I, we need finances for, for a lot of this stuff, but we also need regulatory relief. If these students all come in as McKinney-Ventel students, which are homeless students, there's a whole other, other, you know, set of things that we need to do. We don't know yet whether or not we're gonna get that regulatory relief, and, which worries me, because school starts a few weeks. I want regulatory relief on, kinda what you brought up, student-based performance data, graduation rate. These are things that, I mean, we're on step one here, those are step three and four maybe, but we're still starting to put the bug in the ear of the state representatives to get on their radar, so that when, when we come and ask them for these things, maybe we have a shot at it. But it's been, it's been quite a month, and I know that it's on people's minds, and it's a very political thing, and I don't wanna get into the politics of it, that's not my realm, I don't want it to be my realm. My realm is the kids, and the parents, the students, and the staff of the Maryvale School District. And we're gonna do everything in our power to protect the kids, the staff, and also the taxpayer, because, you know, we, we set this budget in May, the community approved it, and now there's, could be potentially some pretty big changes coming down the pipe again. We're gonna do our best to protect the taxpayers as well.
So the best thing for our community members would be to contact Monica Wallace, Tim Kennedy, and start asking questions of them, where are they gonna step up and start helping? Where's the funding?
Where's the funding? I heard a deserving quote from the governor that said that, you know, she gave us the foundation aid increase last year.
Last year.
Well, we set our budget without all this stuff, so thank you for the foundation increase that we've been asking for for seventeen years, but this, this is above and beyond it, and, you know, where has it come from? In many ways, it's a federal problem too, so the federal, is the federal government gonna step up? The local tax, either way, it's our taxes, you know, it's, you know, whether it's state, federal, local, they're our tax, but it's a federal problem, if they created this issue, they have to step up with some help, because we shouldn't be expected to do it on our own. So it's a constantly changing situation, I've had, you know, people reach out to me, and I, and I feel bad giving vague answers, but those are the answers that I have right now, and that's the frustrating part, Dr. London and I were on a call, two calls today, one with the local, local delegation, like the county, Erie One BOCs, some other school districts, and then we finally got on a call, August twenty-first, we finally got on a call with New York City, today, after all the, all this, these weeks, and they knew nothing. It seemed like they were just, any question that, that we gave, oh, we'll have it ready, we'll, we'll get it ready, or we'll work on it, they've had, all, they sent these people here, and they don't have answers. So it's very frustrating, and I, I understand the frustration of those in the community and within the school district, because we all want answers, we all wanna know what's, what's, what's it gonna be like? And, you know, we've all collectively been put in this situation, you know, but one thing I know about Maryvale is we always make the best of it, we're going to make the best of it, we're gonna do the best that we can for our kids, but at the same time, we're gonna protect every, try and protect everybody's interest too.
Any other questions? All right. With that, I think we can move to resident input, if there's any.
There is.
Yes, there is resident input. My concern is, if you watched Mr. Polo Carves on Saturday, when the other alleged rape took care, or sexual molestation took place, he said, "We're gonna stop this for now, you gotta listen to words, what they say." So we're getting sixty-nine, it started out at twenty-two, now it's sixty-nine. Right. But the last, the last board meeting was twenty-two.
Right.
And I went to the town board, and I asked them the same question, who's paying for them? Okay, now we got sixty-nine, who's paying for them? And, and, all right, so they're gonna stop this for a while, then what? More? Then what? Who's gonna pay for this stuff? And Kathy Opo did say, I saw that, she already gave you money, so she's happy to have it suddenly, well, guess what? Take them back, take them back to New York City. This is where, this is where they came from, go. You know, we love the kids, don't understand, I'm just saying, I speak for our seniors. Do I speak for our seniors today?
Yes.
Our seniors love the kids, they there, they're there as volunteers, but they're fooled, 'cause they're afraid, because some of them have, had cancer, some of them have very low immune systems, they don't wanna get sick, all right? And you have teachers who have gone through the same, the same thing. All right, so you're gonna check out and we talk, and you're gonna have them screened and everything else, okay, that's the kids. Now what happens when the parents start coming into the school? You don't know what they got, you had one, you know, one had TB, he was in a bus with other people, my understanding, and I'm not that smart, and most of you people know that, all right? But TB is, it's air-breathing, so what do they do? Stick his head out the window all the way over here? I don't think so. So, that could be going around, we don't know what's gonna, how they're gonna affect our district and our town forever. I had it all.
The, the, they were screened for TB just a few days ago.
Okay. How long does it take for it to?
I don't know, all I know is they're screening.
I don't know, thirty days, I don't know what it is either. Yeah, but we, you know, again, we're just concerned about that, and, and the town is concerned about, our seniors are concerned about, I'm sure, people who are bringing the kids here, they're kids, they live in their neighborhood, they're bringing their kids here, wait a minute, do I really want them to come here? You know, what's going on? And I'm concerned about, all right, from twenty-two to sixty-nine, what's next? So, I, I, I'm happy with what you're doing, you're doing your job, it has nothing to do with you guys, it has to do with our politicians and people who have, have done this to us, okay? And I think they're gonna get a good hearing about it tomorrow at the town board meeting, but, you know, I'm just concerned about my seniors, I don't want them getting sick, and I don't wanna bring home anybody neither.
When anybody gets sick, we're doing everything in our power to make sure that the folks around here are safe, includes folks in the community.
Okay, can you, are you gonna put that in the paper or something? It's gotta get out besides this, there's only what, thirty people here? We have somebody, oh, you're from the B? All right, you got somebody from the B, she's new. Okay, thank you.
Wait till tomorrow.
I'm sure we'll all see it. Anyone else?
Six.
Okay. With that, do we have a motion to close the meeting?
No.
Sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.